Welcome to the Tuesday, April ninth, twenty twenty four, we're just a planning board meeting. We have a core. We have some new members, but first let me let everyone know that we are being recorded. Both via Wind Cam, thank you very much, Wind Cam, I was appreciated, as well as via Zoom. If you do not wish to appear on the recording, please turn off your video and your microphone. So let's make this official, we'll do a roll call vote, just please call out present. When I call your name, John Cortezus.
Present.
Brian Vernaglia.
Present, and I will tell you how to say my name later.
Oh, well, yeah, please, and John, I apologize if I got yours wrong.
You did very well.
Carrie Leighton.
Present.
Nick Rosettos.
Present.
And Deob Jerius, the current chair, present as well. I'd like to welcome our two new members, John Cortezus and Brian.
Vernalia, like lasagna, it's Vernalia.
Okay, the silent G. Okay, thank you very much. So Brian Vernalia. And John Cortezus, excited to have you both on board with us this evening. Just gonna very quickly go through our agenda. We usually for the new members and those who are just joining us out in TV land. We typically have about fifteen minutes or well, we have. We start out with updates and we also look at, we usually do our. Approval of meeting minutes is the first items on our agenda. Today, we're also going to do our annual planning board reorganization, we have new members, so we're going to. Elect officers for the next year, which includes the chair. The clerk, which we also call the vice chair. And we have liaisons with a number of. Committees and boards across town, as well as we have. Two boards on which we are voting representatives. And we'll vote for that, the other ones are just sort of informal liaisons where we try to keep in touch with them and. Make sure that we're up to date. We're also going to discuss what the planning board will present at town meeting, we have a. We are, one of our responsibilities is to make a presentation to town meeting. Every then, so that's coming up in a, in only a few weeks, so we have to discuss that. We have two ZBA petitions to review. The planning board is an advisory board to the zoning board of appeals on. Special permit and site plan review petitions, and so we have two before us. We're going to be talking later on this evening more about the. Zoning by law, the planning branch has been working on for the last couple of years, which is the MBTA three A. Community or multi-family zoning act. And then our last agenda item is to go into executive session to consider. Performance review of our town planner, and I know it seems really strange to the two new members that the first thing you get to do is talk about the performance of someone that you haven't actually. Perhaps met or reviewed, but we are a bit behind. And it's kind of odd because Taylor joined us mid-stream late last year, so. We'll be moving through that. Anyway. For the updates. I see I've already spoken more than I should have, but for the updates, there are two things I wanted to say quickly. Taylor and I met and Carrie was there in the audience, we met with the select board. A week ago Monday to discuss, to let them know what was going on with our. Zoning by law, overall, I think we got a positive response. And we got. Several members of the board indicated that they supported the by law. One of the members reached out to me later to talk, wanted to help us with outreach, and so that's something we can discuss later. The other thing update is that FinCom. Reviewed our budget request last Thursday. Their response was, I think, disappointing from our point of view last Thursday in that. There were, there were a number of inaccuracies in their analysis that I think we'll have to deal with, but they. Recommended against. Adding the position of assistant town planner. I, they have, however, reopened our budget as of their meeting last night. And I don't have any further information, I don't know, care if you have any further information on that you wanted to add.
No, I think that discussion is ongoing and we'll learn more and report back as we learn, but.
Yeah, I mean, for the new members, we have, we are a single person planning department and we have a town planner. We have been. Advocating for an assistant town planner. For a number of years, it has actually, the position was approved by town meetings several years back. We just need to get it into the budget, we had the support of the town manager who put that position in our, in the budget. And the select board also voted approval of that position, went to the FinCom and there was a budget deficit this year. But like, that's, that's something in progress. Anyway, onwards to the. Planning board reorganization. So the two big positions are chair and clerk slash vice chair. The duties of the chair are to play chief cat herder and move behind the scenes to make sure everything works smoothly to liaison with various committees. Work with Taylor, and there's a number of administrative things behind the scenes. Technically, the role of the clerk is to essentially. Keep a note of decisions made by the board and transmit them. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention, we have with us this evening, of course, Nancy Pulcari, our recording secretary, hi Nancy, so sorry to have missed the, in the introduction. We do have our recording secretary takes care of minutes during the meeting, so the clerk's role is primarily to. Primarily is to write up our ZBA petition responses and pass those on to the. To the appropriate people in the building department who will pass them on to the ZBA, so, but in the past, the clerk slash vice chair has also. Helped the chair with various duties. So those are the two positions, the important ones up for grabs. So. If anyone, I am stepping back as chair, so the field is wide open. So.
DM, you can also choose to have the clerk and vice chair be separate people too.
We can do that.
We don't necessarily need a vice chair.
The, yeah, we don't need, the vice chair is actually something that was set up a few years back in the sense that. We were trying to come up with a. A transition so that whoever became chair had some. Time to understand what was going on, and so we sort of said, well, the person who's the clerk or the vice chair would be the chair in waiting. But that's up to this board to decide how they want to deal with transitions, so. The vice chair is something we kind of created. Anyway, so the clerk and the chair, those are the positions, do we, are there anyone who wants to? Either recommend someone?
I would nominate Carrie Leighton for chair.
I would, I would second that.
Okay. Any other people who'd like to nominate or self nominate for chair?
I.
I'm sorry, was that, I, I.
No, I was, I was moving on to the next position prematurely.
Oh, okay, so why don't we have a Carrie, do, would you accept that, that, that role?
You know, I'm not, I don't have a ton of experience on planning board, but I've had the opportunity over the past couple of months to work closely and sort of. Observe the role of chair and develop my relationship with Taylor and with. Deob and I think working collaboratively as the board, I think I feel like I could. Be of service, so I'm happy to accept the nomination and. I take your faith in me very seriously, thank you.
Great, so why don't we, we'll do a roll call vote, let's see. All of a sudden, everyone's moved, John.
Yes.
Yes, okay, Brian?
Yeah.
Nick?
Hi.
And I vote yes as well, congratulations, Carrie, you're a new chair. Also now our next, our next role and. Carrie would just as, how would you like to proceed with the rest of the meeting, would you like to take over running the meeting, or would you like me to proceed?
So you opened the meeting and I, I know you're not feeling well, so I can, I can sort of tap in and help if you need me to, but since you opened it, I think maybe this could be your swan song, but I'm.
Okay, I appreciate that, I seem to be somewhat stable at the moment, so why don't I just continue to keep this going? Is there a nomination for clerk?
I, I'd like to nominate Brian Vernalia for the position of clerk slash vice chair, if he's willing to take it.
I will second that.
Brian, you are nodding, do you want to vocally say that you are willing to do that?
Yes, I am, I will obviously need a lot of handholding from the experienced members of this board, but I'm, I'm, I'm willing and honored to serve if elected.
Excellent, so we have a motion, I, I think we have enough. Votes for nomination, sorry, boy, the brain is really not working, let's, let's just do a vote then, Brian. Oh, you can vote for yourself. You're just in the middle of my screen, John.
I.
Carrie.
Hi.
Nick.
Hi.
And I say I as well, thank you very much, Brian, for accepting that role, thanks a lot, Carrie as well. Let's move on now to the, our liaisons and representatives, Taylor, you have. Some recommendations to us.
And we passed over vice chair.
So.
Well, I nominated Brian to be the vice chair and the clerk.
I see.
Okay. Great. So just, just as everyone know, technically, the, according to the legislation which. Gives the planning board its, its existence, there's only a clerk position, there's chair and clerk, but. Okay, so here we have. Oh, what do you know, these are recommendations, vice chair, Deob is luckily not in the line of fire anymore, so Brian, thank you for doing those.
You're welcome.
Yeah, so for the, the two. The two, the, the two representative roles, meaning we have a vote from the planning board. Sorry, Carrie, you may have to step in sooner than rather than later. Capital planning, so the capital planning committee is the. Committee in town, which makes recommendation to town meeting on capital expenditures and primarily expenditures which are. Paid for out of the building stabilization fund, the capital stabilization fund. And a couple of other funds. And a couple of other funds. So this is a. We are a voting member. They meet. Pretty much, it starts around in August. It's a pretty heavy duty lift. That's right before town, fall town meeting. The. A number of, all of the departments in town which have capital requests come before the Capital Committee. They present their requests with documentation. There isn't five-year plans of capital outlays and how this all fits in. The, the Capital Planning Committee is faced with a pretty thankless role of having to. Prioritize. Which projects are, are, are suggested to town meeting for funding and toss out a whole bunch because we have fairly limited capital funds. So that's what the Capital Planning Representative does. The other board is the. The big one is the Housing Partnership Board. So this is a board which is set up which. Is responsible for reviewing and making suggestions about. Housing in town, not just affordable housing is a big one, but also. Housing for residents of. I'm drawing a blank. I apologize. Then we have a couple of other smaller committees which meet very much rare, more. Less often, which is the Committee on Names, which gets the name Streets and Places. And the Permanent Street Treaty Committee, which is actually now coming much more active. And so we have a, we have a. Representative on that, and I think that's a pretty, that is becoming a more important committee and Carrie, I didn't mean to. Not bring it up to its proper stature. My apologies. I know you're on there right now. And then the CBD RS, that is the Center Business District Review Subcommittee. And that Subcommittee is composed of members from the Planning Board as well as from Design Review Committee and the Historical Commission. And their role is to. Advise the Planning Board when. Design review and site planner view. Requests come through for. Projects in the Center Business District. The Planning Board is the Special Permit Granting Authority for the Center Business District, which is why. We, and they are part of the Advisory Board to the. Planning Board. Okay, Taylor, I'm gonna. Why don't you discuss more about your recommendations for those?
Sure, and I can just kind of move, move through all of this. So for the, for, for the recommendations for these four. Positions, Capital Planning, CBD RS, Committee on Names, Housing Partnership Board and Permanent Street Treaty Committee, we do need Planning Board votes on today. The recommendations for liaisons is an ongoing conversation that we can have. I'll get into, into that more in a second. Let's focus on the recommendations for the representatives. For, for these committees. Traditionally, the Chair is. Is the representative for Capital Planning, so I've recommended Carrie. I've also recommended Carrie for Permanent Street Treaty Committee because she already sits on there. However, Carrie can let us all know if she feels a little overburdened by the rest of her responsibilities, so. She can decide that if she wants that or not, but since she already sits there, I think that we should allow her to continue. CBD RS, Nick already works very closely with Design Review and with Historical, so I thought that he would appreciate. Sitting on, on that. And I added. Brian as well.
Great.
And Committee on Names, John Cortezes, and Housing Partnership Board, DM, because he is currently sitting on that. On, on that board. DM, you can let us know if you would like to relinquish that. Or actually might be Yicheng.
Yeah, Yicheng was on there and I, I would like to relinquish that. I think that.
Okay, so, so, so what I ask the Planning Board do now is. Decide whether they want to confirm, confirm these or have a discussion on each one. We'll need a new, a new suggestion or maybe someone to step up for Housing Partnership.
I would do the housing.
Does this need a formal nomination process?
Yeah, we, we, no, I think we just have to vote these in.
Yeah, just vote and, and, and all, and all coordinate the rest of it with the town clerk.
Okay, great.
Great.
So was that, John, did you just say?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Okay, so why don't we just vote these in? Let's just do a roll call vote, except the slate for representatives. Carrie.
Hi.
John.
I.
Brian.
I.
Nick.
I.
And I say I as well. One, one note, I think on Capital Planning is because there is, there's still a couple more meetings of Capital Planning before Springtown Meeting. And since I've been part of that process for the, the past year, I would just. Ask that I be allowed to continue through Springtown Meeting. Because I think that makes the most sense.
Do you want a motion to that extent somehow or?
I, I think it does just. I think if the consensus of the board is good enough on that.
Yeah.
Right with me.
Okay.
Fine.
Taylor.
For, for liaisons, the liaisons are really. They're really not anything more than contacts for a heart. For these, these boards and, and other committees. They may request. You know, the Board of Health may say. You know. Brian, what are, what are the things coming down the pipe and for Fall Town Meeting and that, your name would be on there to, to. To, to tell them. I've just done my best. There's some reorganizing here from last year. I've just done my best to try to make it as equal as possible. And I have tried to tailor it to individuals. What I feel individuals personalities are. I've put. You know, I've kept Nick on the historical and the sign stuff. Carrie, you kind of turn, lean a little more towards. Environmental. D E B, you're kind of more of the. The, the finance and stuff that it's ingrained in history a little bit more. Anyway, I, I've, I've, I've tried to, I've tried to make it as even as possible, but something to know about these liaisons, they can change. At, at, at any time.
Do we, did we have, there's only one group missing that I think we hope to continue for a bit longer and I want to say Yicheng was the. Liaison to the Z RAC. Do we need that listed?
It's a good point. I think that we, that we certainly can add a, a Z RAC year. I think we have questions about what the future of the Z RAC is going to be. I think that it can be something that becomes a little bit more permanent than what it currently is. Potentially. But we can certainly use. Suggestion for Z RAC.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if I have one. I just thought, didn't see it on the list.
So for Brian and John, other than being a really cool sounding acronym, the Z RAC is the Zoning Reviews Advisory Committee. Which was, it's a committee of. A number of town residents as well as currently a member from the. Design Review Committee and the, and the Historical Commission, which has been advising the Planning Board on. The MBTA three A bylaw as well as our ongoing work on. Re-envisioning and revitalizing the North Main Street Corridor. So that's what Z RAC is. So I think if, if no one has an issue with the recommendations, we can just, everyone can just say, yeah, that's me and we can just move on. Unless you feel like.
Yeah, it sounds, sounds good.
And we can move any of these around and even, even the, the representatives, if you find that maybe. You know, if the people want to swap, I mean, it, it'd be good to swap. The representatives, it's, it's good to build up at some time on the committee to understand what's happening and maybe. But we can talk about that later. Anyway, so great. That was very efficient. Thank you very much, Taylor. Usually this thing takes about five weeks to get going. So I'm really happy. One of the things that we should pro, that. Traditionally happens is that the Planning Board sets its goals for the next year. I think it's, we, we usually try to do that after town meeting because there's often a rush to do things before town meeting. So traditionally, you know, maybe the first meeting in May. Or second meeting in May, the Planning Board would sit down and, and come up with what it wants to do for the next fiscal. We have, we have some things that we highlight when we do our budget request in the fall. But this is a new Planning Board, so it may wish to tweak those. So. Anyway. So are we? Report to town meeting. We're actually ahead of schedule, which is really remarkable. So. Each. Twice a year when we have town meeting, the Planning Board does some sort of report. We are. Our directive actually from our charter from the state is to make reports to town meeting. Discussing the state of, how is of, of. The use of. I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry, my, my, my. Whatever is causing me to be ill today is coming to the forefront. So. Typically, we talk about. Projects which are, are, development projects which are ongoing in town, so. Things we know about, say, for instance, what's happening at the HFL's Hardware Site. What's happening at Ten Converse. We had the successful. Special permit from the Waterfield Lot, which we, which we approved earlier this year, so we run and talk about those things. We'd like to talk about upcoming initiatives. And letting town meeting know essentially. What's happening around town and anything that might be happening in the future, things that we know are going to happen from the state or changes. So this is the part where we sit down and we come up with what we would like to have to say. It's kind of compressed this year in terms of the time we have. The Chair usually writes this up and, and sends it around to the board for approval. Of the. Town Moderator requires that the board vote to approve the report being given to town meeting, so. We will have one more. Evening meeting or a regular meeting before town meeting and we typically have. Short meetings right upon the night of town meeting. The Planning Board's report is usually the very first night. It's actually typically the first article after. It's like Article Two. So. We have a pretty short runway to get this going, so. Opening it up to what people would like to, if there's something special you want to hear other than that laundry list I just gave.
Yeah, what is the total amount of time that we have to talk? Is it seven minutes?
We have ten minutes. So, you know. We have, of course, so we, we have our. The, the, the other important article we're bringing is the. The MBTA three A zoning, we're going to have ten minutes to discuss that and I think town meeting would get a little annoyed with this if we took some of our report time to push that. So we want to. So if we split this up into. How many sections we want to talk about? So if we just talk about ongoing projects. Those are development, so that would be about, we could do three minutes on ongoing developments. We want to say something about our North Main Street Initiative. For the new board members, we did put that on. Not necessarily on ice, I'd say on the back burner because we had to move to three A. But that's certainly something that we're still very actively working, so we want to say something about what's happening with North Main Street. Anything else?
New board composition, Taylor.
Composition, yep.
Probably done the big stuff.
Yeah, Taylor's old, Taylor's old news now. We introduced him in November, so everybody knows who he is, right?
That's true.
Is the Holton Cross area something still on our radar?
It definitely is. That was another, that one actually got moved to the refrigerator. In order to make room for. We actually didn't have the resources because we were without a town planner, so Holton, Holton, Swanton Cross is definitely on.
We should also talk about the Assistant Town Planner that we would like to have. That's something that could be in that. That part of the presentation potentially, maybe not.
Yeah, the work Griffin did.
Yeah, so we should talk about. We, we do have, oh, right, so John and Brian, we have. We are lucky to have an intern this year, a Northeastern co-op student who's been working with Taylor. Griffin O'Neil. Who's been, I think, an amazing resource. We were able to employ Griffin because we had leftover monies. From, because our previous town. Because Taylor was hired in August, we had, and so we didn't have a town planner for the first several months of the. Fiscal year and we had more money in our personnel budget because of the. Difference in salaries between our Old Town Planner, Brian Zekely and Taylor, so we had just enough money to be able to hire. Griffin at co-op wages for six months, so. But. So we can, we can talk about what Griffin has done and Taylor, you know more than anyone how much Griffin's been to help, so. Anything else? Well, my suggestion would be that we start with this. We put something together, send it around to the board. And if you come up with any other things, please send them to Taylor. One of the things we have to worry about again for the new members, Brian, you probably are familiar with open meeting law, but. We, we don't have any conversations outside of public meetings in order so that we don't violate open meeting law, so. If you have any suggestions and things, please send them directly to Taylor and he will distribute them. Okay. So that's a start for the. Report to town meeting. And we have thirteen minutes left. Wow.
I remembered something I probably should have mentioned in the update, so I can kill probably one minute of this, which is that the Community Preservation Act Group met and. You know, are on track to make their presentation to town meeting and they offered to come before us and present. I didn't know if we had enough concerns for them to spend their time and effort doing that, but if we want to. Pose any questions to them, they're welcome, they're willing to meet with the board. I, I, I think they're doing, I've, I've been the, the, the person on the. Meetings with them, representing the sort of historic section of the CPA and I think it's all going well and I look forward to the vote.
Well, one of the things that I think they are looking for is our endorsement for their. Warrant article, so it would probably make sense to have them come before us and ask for our endorsement. So.
Okay, and they need to be before us to do that, or can we?
They do not, they do not, but I think it's.
I've set aside time on the twenty-third, our next meeting, to go over. What they are presenting, because I don't think it's done yet. I think it's going to be done. Next week, so we'll, we'll have time as a board to review it. I don't know if. We're gonna get anyone to present it. Although I'm also on the, it's both Carrie and I are on the historical. They should have put us on different ones, but. Now that I think about it, didn't think about that till now. But. Yeah, we'll, we'll have a, we'll have an opportunity to see the whole completed thing. At least that's what we're told.
One of the things that's important is, oh, sorry.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
But by law, the Planning Board has a seat at the table if the CPA were to pass for the CPA Committee. So we actually do have a, a pretty big voice. So we actually do have a, a pretty big voice in how things move ahead. So it's important that we, if we support this, that we actually. I believe that we vote at some point before town meeting.
I agree. I just didn't know if we wanted the formal presentation. I definitely think we should. Take any opportunity we have to offer our support.
Yeah, Taylor, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we have time set aside. At our next meeting to review. Well, we, we, we should make time at our next meeting to review all of the warrant articles which. Are of interest to the planning board and decide whether we are going to. Vote to support, to not support, or just simply say nothing. Or have a statement. So that's typically the, the planning board does weigh in on articles which we think are. Within our purview to comment on. So, and in the past, some. Sponsors have come to us and asked specifically for endorsement. So. Okay. So. I'm kind of fading here, so I would be more than happy to turn the. The gavel, as it were, over to Carrie and Taylor.
Sounds great.
I'm, I'm, I'm happy to take over, Carrie. So we do have a few more minutes, but, but I'll ask, is anyone from petition forty ten in the audience today? For three, I think it's bonded, I, bonded? Okay, thank you, Emily. I will. Emily, I'm gonna make you co-host, you'll have the ability to unmute yourself. So.
Hi, everyone.
Emily, are you, hi, are you, are you okay with, with us starting this, this a little bit early?
Yep, we're ready.
So what we have in front of the board today is petition forty ten. Seeking a special permit. In accordance to chapter forty A, section nine of M G L. Has to be permitted to construct an addition that will be located closer to the front property line than permitted as of right. The property is located in R B. R B D zoning district contains just over six thousand square feet. The proposed addition is a front inside, southern side wraparound covered porch with a new side, southern side stair and landing. The front and rear setbacks of the existing building are non-conforming and as proposed, the front of the structure will further encroach into the front setback. Existing rear setback is non-conforming, but will not change. Architecturally proposed addition remains consistent current building and neighborhood. And engineering review does not apply to this project. Emily, if you have floors yours, if you would like to, to speak about your, your project, we would love to hear about it.
Sure. So I think if you scroll down a couple of pages, there might. Yep, sorry, right there. So she just included some images of what we're looking to do. So what you're looking at right now is the plot plan. The red outline is showing our existing home. So obviously the larger structures are home and then up in the top corner, that's the garage. What we're proposing to add is the blue section. So that's showing a wraparound porch. So off the front of the house, it'll just be five feet in depth, a little bit closer towards the sidewalk. And then as you wrap around to the side, you can kind of see our current, our current steps in kind of like a blackish gray. So we're proposing turning the steps uphill to lessen the, the steepness of them. And then also just continue the porch around there. So what you're looking at in images below are just the different views of the house. So it's just kind of showing how the porch will look. And then the architect also just put this page together to kind of show some of the other homes in the neighborhood. So our house is the one in the bottom left corner of that, of that image. So you can kind of see like we already have a little, a little roof bump out. Back in the day, it was probably a porch and then they enclosed it. And then she just put some photos of some other houses in our neighborhood that do have porches as well.
For, for. Just, we have a, a, a new board here, so just to make sure that, that, that we're all on the same page. The responsibility of the, of the planning board is to advise. The zoning board of appeals on the planning board's recommendation. So what, what the petitioners are expecting tonight are. A, the planning board to vote of recommendation, not a recommendation. Or they can vote to abstain a recommendation. I don't suggest that, but do that if you wanted. At this time. Anyone from the board like to?
Are those drawing, the, the actual drawings of the house? Are those as, as completed?
The ones that you're looking at right now on the screen?
I'm looking at the, the paper version, but it's, it, it, it just shows the actual gray. Drawings of the, of the house. And I'm wondering if, and it shows a porch and it shows stairs. I'm wondering if that is. Sort of the post, is that what, is that what it's gonna look like? Okay. And what's, and what's new on those? Just the porch basically in the stairs?
Just, yeah, well, the porch and the stairs, also the two dormers on the top will be new. That's a by rights project. So the special permit is just for the porch.
Okay.
Is, is the entrance onto the porch an existing entrance right now? Is anything changing about access to the porch?
No, the front, the front door is staying as is, it's staying in the same location of the house. The only thing that would be changing there is the steps. So right now the steps come. Like right off the front door into the driveway. So we would just be turning them out of the driveway to the side of the house.
And you are get, you are going from a setback that is. Currently nineteen and a half feet from the front of the property or this, from the front of the property. And you're increasing that, you're decreasing that. What's the change in setback? You're, you're decreasing the setback from the street from nineteen point five to fourteen point one eight feet. Is that right?
Correct. Or fourteen point eight, I think it says.
Fourteen point eight, okay. So I see that as our big question as a planning board. You know, we see sort of these properties that are, so the reason you're before us is because you need a special permit to do this. Because you're, you're violating, which is an aggressive word, but you're changing the setback to be. Sort of less, even less compliant, although you are already out of compliant just because of the nature of the property and when the setback rules were written. I'm only saying that for the new members and our thought as a board is always, you know, we see the projects, they're beautiful projects. Any homeowner would want a wraparound porch, of course. But we have to think through the town of what we're doing with setbacks and what precedent we're setting for neighborhoods and those sorts of things. That's always what I, what goes through my mind when we have these projects in front of us.
Okay, understood. Yeah, um, the architect, I think she included a bunch of those photos as well of the different porches to kind of show that there already are a lot of homes in this neighborhood that. Do have porches that are very close to the sidewalks. So it wouldn't be anything unusual in this neighborhood.
And there's, you know, maybe at some point we just rethink whether our setbacks are, but I'm.
Winchester. Has, because you actually have two front setbacks in this house because you're on a corner. In some towns, you don't need, one of those would be your, your front yard, the other would be a side yard. But you're kind of proposing. Is going to what is pretty much a side yard setback for this, this face of the house. You know, tech in Winchester, we call it a front setback. Because it, it's bounded by the road, but. You know, you, you're compliant. On the, around the corner. I forget what it is, but you've got. Looks like you have plenty of room on the other side. It's not. Yes, thirty feet, thirty, thirty feet at the tightest. It's not on that. Summary, but it's on the engineer's draw.
Of the plot plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is also a, this is in a ten thousand square foot zone. So those setbacks are really designed for lots that are that size. And this is a much smaller lot, only sixty five hundred square feet. So, I mean, the other thing is that, that. Page, the next page, fifteen, I think. It really shows that it, it looks like a number of those lots are actually smaller. So this might be a part of town which was. Developed prior to the establishment of the zoning district. And if I were to look in my, from when, when I look down and I look at the, the existing setbacks. A lot of them look like they are non-compliant. And in my view, I don't think that this addition would really be too out of character with the neighborhood. So, and when, in, in my view, when you're looking at an older neighborhood where you have a lot of non-compliant homes, does it fit in? And I think, in my view, I think it does. So I, I would be in favor of this.
Yeah, especially because it's a porch. It's not a, you know, it's not a solid wall, has a little less visual mass to it. You know, you're, you're inside the setback, but it's a porch, it's open.
Right. And you're not architecturally changing the building and summer keeps getting hotter. Who doesn't want a covered porch?
I mean, it would be a nice addition to the building. It would certainly look, it would be handsome. I think I, I think about it differently if it was enclosed, but.
So I, I drove by to take a look at this. The house immediately next to yours, is that on the same facing the road? Is that one or seven? Do you know what number that is?
The blue house is number one.
Okay, do you by any chance know what the setback on that is? Because it looked quite a bit closer than your existing house. And in fact, I, I don't know, it looked like it was gonna be pretty similar after you, if you did this addition to be, have a similar front setback. I couldn't easily find, I didn't spend a lot of time looking for it, but I couldn't easily find a setback for that. I don't know if you know what that is.
I, I don't know what it is. And you probably would have a hard time finding it because we, we know them very well. They've been in that house for forty five years, I think. So there probably isn't a current plot plan available. But I, I don't know the, the setback. If it makes a difference, we can try to find out.
It, it does not, it does not. I, I guess that what I was trying to say in a long way around is, I, I agree with what Diab said, that I feel like. In this neighborhood, there are others that are closer. I feel like what I saw of this and what I saw of your house, which is lovely. I think would actually match the, is the style and nature of the neighborhood. So I'd be inclined to support this as well. That is a long way of saying that.
I think I hear a lot of good agreement from the board. Does anyone want to move anything?
I would, I would like to move for the first time in three years. I would like to make a motion. Because the chair can't make a motion. So I would like to make a motion to. Recommend favorable action on, what the heck is the name of this petition?
Forty ten.
Permit application for three Bonad Road.
On, on, on Z B A petition number forty ten for a three Bonad Road.
Wait, you're, you're chairing, right? Can I second some?
No, you can't do anything.
But I'm not.
But you are a chair, you are a real chair now.
I will second that motion on behalf of Carrie.
Okay, since I guess I'm still cheering.
No, I, I can, I can roll call vote. I, I didn't know if Taylor was officially chair. I just didn't know.
I'm just running the meeting. I'm just running the meeting. You can.
Okay, roll call vote then, Diab.
Uh, I.
John.
I.
Nick, sorry, brain scramble.
I.
And Brian.
I.
And I'm an I as well.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ask the board a question since I'm now clerk. I'm keeping track of votes. If they're unanimous, am I just keeping track of that it's unanimous? And if it's not, am I then keeping track of who voted how? And do I need to keep track of who made the motion and who seconded motion?
So you're gonna get all that in your minutes. But, but it doesn't hurt to, to double track it. So you can, you can cert, I do recommend, I think Sally probably did that, right? Sally probably always.
I think the official job of the clerk is recording the votes, but Nancy does a beautiful job. And I, now that I'm thinking about it, you usually report the vote as passes unanimously or passes. One, so, you know.
Yeah. So, so on our transmissions to the, to the Z B A. We, we try to. Not just record the motion and the votes, which we, we do put all the names down there if they, if it's a split vote. But also try to give some essence of the board's reason for the vote. You know, so for instance, in this case, we would say something like, you know, we find that it is, it is. In scale with the rest of the neighborhood, you know, all of the things that led us to that opinion. And. So, just so the Z B A appreciates having more information than simply just, you know, the line of the vote.
Okay, so I can draft something and then run it by Taylor and Carrie to make sure that it's in line with what we want to be submitting. And then who signs it?
Uh, you, you sign it and we can, we can give you, you know, Sally, there's plenty of. Previous examples of what the Z B A has gotten. So you can ask Taylor for some of those and then you can, you know. Sally was extremely detailed. It, you can find your own voice. So.
Perfect, thank you. Brian, let's, let's, uh, let's re, regroup at some point this week to kind of go over. Typically, we have longer to do these than, than these two. We actually need to get these two done. Kind of right away, but we typically have a, a few weeks to get them, to get them done.
Okay, the sooner I do it, the sooner I'll remember what we were talking about. Even with my chicken scribble, I'll remember well what we were thinking. If I wait two weeks, I won't remember as well.
Yes, Brian, one of the benefits of wind cam recording us is that. You can, they, they not only have it on their own stream, it also goes up on YouTube. So it's, it's an amazing resource. So.
Fantastic.
We are.
We have a Zoom recording that, that Taylor keeps track of as well, sorry.
You gonna say something, Carrie?
We're still ahead of schedule.
Yep, we're still a few minutes ahead. But if. The petitioners or anyone from forty eleven or oh seven Highland are here, can you please raise your hand? You're now both unable to unmute yourself. Would you, would, would you guys be okay if we started a few minutes early on this?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you. Everyone else in the board, okay with that too? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
We need a.
Say again.
Do we need a motion to open this or is this not a?
No, no, we're okay. I'm just getting myself coordinated. So this is a petition forty eleven, four oh seven Highland. Ab, this is also the Winchester Community Music School. The petitioners seek to amend the originally, their original petition. Which was granted on April twentieth, twenty twenty three. That was decision number thirty nine eighty six. This is a site plan review. For, to construct an addition that exceeds twenty five percent of the existing building floor area and has greater than twenty parking spaces. And is permitted to construct addition and total floor area of the building will be greater than five thousand square feet. The property is located in RDB. Um, and the property contains about two point seven two acres. Uh, again, this is a site plan review. Um. And it is building off of a decision that was um, made April twentieth twenty twenty three. Um, this is a, there's a lot of detail in this, in, in this packet. Um, I want to give the, uh, the petitioners. Full ability to present, uh, you, if you want to share a screen, if you want to do Q and A, I, go ahead, Diab.
Oh, I just please finish your thought, Taylor. I want to.
Um, I don't want to, uh, to uh, mischaracterize your, what you are, are attempting to, to bring to the board. That was all. Diab, you can.
I, I just want, I was um, hoping that the petitioner would explain. Um, why it is they want to, what, what it is they're revising about the existing decision. That was something that I. Wasn't able to grasp from the materials, so thank you, that's all.
So um, Ralph, Connie, you have the ability to share a screen. You can do whatever you feel is best to present to the board tonight.
Thank you very much. My name's Ralph Dunne. I'm the client representative for the Winchester Community Music School, one of the petitioners of this petition. I am also a registered architect, but I am not acting in that capacity uh, for this presentation. Uh, I am joined by Connie Lou, uh, project engineer, civil engineer from High Point Engineering. And uh, also in attendance is Dario Bukscova from CI Designs. They are. The architect of record and have been with this project since the outset. Uh, you asked a very pertinent question, which is why are we coming back to re-present? And the answer is, after a very long process that we went through last year. Uh, we went into further design development of the project. And uh, yea verily, the numbers blew our socks off. And uh, we were forced, asked by the board, forced by the circumstances. Uh, to rethink our entire approach to uh. Basically expanding the school. The presentation that we put forward this evening is a uh, smaller project. It involves a one hundred thirty five seat performance facility. Last year, we had a hundred and fifty seat performance facility. Uh, it involves building in what we refer to as the back of the property. Uh, which is the southwest corner off of the rear of the building. Last year, uh, and I'm not going to dwell on this too terribly. We built to the north of the existing building into the parking lot. And when we went into the parking lot, we did not want to lose parking, so we ended up doing an extraordinary amount of reengineering of the parking layout. Um, and landscaping for the project. That produced uh, quite an overage in our budgeting allocation. We also discovered that in order to expand the existing performance space. Which uh, contains about seating for seventy five, give or take, plus musicians. Uh, we were actually having to virtually destroy structurally and architecturally. The existing performance space wing, which was built as an add-on to the original nineteen nineteen building, the man's. Uh, and this was uh, added on in nineteen ninety eight. And so we said, well, that's adding also a crippling amount of new money that we don't have. So we took a look at what would be the impact of avoiding the parking lot. What would be the impact of. Repurposing the existing performance space into classroom space? And if we could do that, substantial money could be saved and diverted into the new project. So the view that you are looking at now. Uh, has the existing south elevation of the man's with its enclosed porch on the right. And has the new two-story addition in the rear to the left. And it caps off at the, basically the apex or top of the slope. Which slopes away from the building to the southwest and to the west of the building. Uh, if, if you scroll up, I'd like to just tell you what's contained within the two-story structure. So on the, on the lower level, which is what's visible right now. We uh, have a whole new series of uh, men's and ladies restroom facilities to support the population. Uh, when uh, the auditorium is in use. We also have percussion and ensemble studios, recording studios. And private lesson studios, as well as egress paths and mechanical equipment facilities. All of this exists on the lower level, which is filled basically with. Uh, teaching studios of one variety or another, or building infrastructure that's in gray. Uh, and egress circulation routes. We are also proposing, if you look on the right side of the building in pink or salmon color. Uh, to put in a new elevator. The building currently has a two-stop elevator serving three floors, which is to say. It has a two-stop elevator that only services two floors. And uh, we are proposing a larger elevator, which will be uh, gurney sized, will be piano sized, will be. Xylophone sized, will be able to move instruments and people to all three floors. And so that is a new feature uh, that we are adding. If you scroll to the next floor, which is the first floor plan. You will see in a darker blue, the new performance space with the stage to the left or south. And uh, seating for a hundred and thirty five seats. There will also be a sound control booth and storage. There will be ramping. Uh, in dark gray, leading up to the raised platform stage, which is elevated by twelve inches. And will allow us to have off-stage storage of uh, grand piano and other larger instruments. Uh, the space, which we refer to as the new Nichols Hall. Uh, will be connected to the existing building in two locations. And will be able to egress into the existing building through safe passage. Directly to the outside or downstairs, uh, which is in the new facility and egressing directly out also. Uh, the old Nichols Hall, which is kind of in a lavender color. Uh, will be converted into a Suzuki studio. And what this allows us to do is not have to tamper with the structural integrity of the existing nineteen ninety eight. Uh, addition to the building. There are other minor things that we're doing, having to do with writing the circulation. Uh, having egress doors open outward, uh, at the polite request of the fire department and good planning. Uh, and uh, we are also making the building generally uh, handicapped accessible uh, throughout. If you go to the next floor, which is the second floor plan. You will see that our elevator extends up to the third floor and the third floor contains teaching studios. Uh, and so that's a new feature that the building does not have today. If you then continue down to the exterior view. This is the view that we started with, and this is the south elevation. If you continue to the next view. This is what I refer to as the uh, polite owl's eye view, the owl which resides in one of the trees on the backward slope to the west. Uh, this is not a view that you're ever going to get unless you have a large thirty-foot extension ladder, climb it up it and look at it. But what you see is the left or pitched roof portion. That's the nineteen ninety eight addition. And behind the kind of Palladian-esque window is uh, the Nichols Hall that's being converted into the Suzuki studio. To the right is our new facility, two stories, the lower level being. Uh, the uh, the practice studios, ensemble studios mentioned earlier. And the two larger windows are inside the uh, performance space. And it's a tall space to work through the acoustics of uh, performance and occupancy and the like. We are proposing a flat roof for that structure, but we are overhanging the roof. To pick up and mimic some of the shadow lines afforded by the original nineteen nineteen building. And in point of fact, to mimic some of the shadow line characteristics of the nineteen ninety eight building. Uh, I think if you continue on.
This is the last page that I have.
This is the last formal page. Um. If you go back to page number sixty five. Yes. Page sixty five is an important page. This is the, what we would call the flat elevations uh, of the building. The top or east elevation shows the existing house as it is today. And when you look at it frontal on, you do not see the nineteen ninety eight wing. And if you look to the left, you see a little portion with detailed bubbles uh, identifying. The extent of the new, that's correct, thank you. Uh, the extent of the new uh, performance space slightly above the existing flat roof porch. If you continue to the west elevation, that's the uh, next elevation down. Uh, this we rendered for you, and what you can see is that we have a uh, a stucco enclosed. Existing nineteen ninety eight wing. We have a half-timber stucco house. Which is the original nineteen nineteen building. And we also then have the new addition, which is going to be proposed, we are proposing. That it will be constructed out of a hardy plank and hardy board material, cementitious uh, panels. The larger panels will describe the performance space. The slatted or plank panels will describe the lower level and uh, service areas of the new addition. The coloring of the new addition, our current new addition. Will be designed to match out the color tone and uh, uh, slight texture of the stucco, which is on the existing building. And the nineteen ninety eight uh, wing that was uh, built. If you continue down, down to the south elevation. Uh, here you see the existing mans to the right. And you see the new addition to the left, and you can see. How we are describing the performance space with the larger panels. And then the service spaces and the classroom spaces on the lower level and egress door. Uh, with the horizontal planking. If you continue to the north elevation. And the north elevation, yes, you're on it now. Uh, it has a parking area further to the north. In other words, I'm standing in the parking area, if you will. And here we describe the new elevator enclosure, which will extend up and uh, service the second floor. First floor and lower level. And you can see to the right. The little bit of the uh, new addition peeking beyond uh, the addition that was done in nineteen ninety eight. So this is a lot to digest, and I appreciate that ever so much, and I'm delighted. To propose that you ask me questions. I will state that our intention. Upon expanding the school is to retain all fifty eight parking spaces that we have on site today. Uh, we have a requirement by uh, zoning at six hundred square feet per car. Um, we have a zoning requirement for thirty eight or thirty nine parking spaces. With a particular count for handicapped and van access and the like, which we exceed. The other thing I will point out is that we are totally within the guidelines established for. Frontside yard setbacks, for lot coverage, for uh, open area retention, for. Uh, hard-packed surface areas. I believe we are fully compliant. We, we were compliant before. Uh, with a larger building, and we've done our analysis, so I believe I can honestly tell you that we are still uh, compliant.
Uh, this is Connie Lou, I'm the project engineer with High Point Engineering, and I can, I can uh, agree that it is. Uh, still fully compliant, and you can see it on the layout and materials plan. Um. If, let's see, that would be sixty one here. Um, scroll, right? Yeah, the table there. Um. So we have each of the criteria, the requirement. The existing, which is in compliance, and then the proposed, uh, which most of them, like the lot area frontage width will not change. Uh, front yard setback will not change. Side and rear yard setback. Um, will change slightly, but they will still be in compliance, and then. Um, open area green space in hardscape will change, and they'll still be in compliance. And the max building height will not change.
Did you? Have a calculation for the building height?
Um.
For the, the, the new, the new portion. Based on the grade.
Yes, that should be in the elevations. Um, what sheet was, there was further down. Believe.
Yeah, we are actually uh, from grade to the new roof of the new addition. We are actually lower than the peak of the roof of the nineteen ninety eight edition. Which is below the peak of the original building.
Hmm.
Diab, do you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I, this was just when, when the presentation's done, I, I was just um, wanted to suggest we bring up the criteria for site plan review.
Sure. Ralph and Connie, do you have anything else that we'd like to state, or we open it up for, for, for discussion?
Delighted to let the board discuss, ask questions of us. Um. It's a long process that we have been through, and we are. Uh, mea culpa asking your indulgence because we're coming before all of the boards again.
One, one additional thing that I would like to note for the board is that. Uh, the petition is our currently working with the engineering department to make sure that they are. Uh, that, that engineering is, is happy with, with the project. Uh, that process is ongoing. Um, but it is a part, uh, it is something that the petition has shown that they are, uh, that they are doing.
Thank you.
Diab, would you like to lay out the, oh, sorry, Connie.
Oh, I was just gonna follow up with a little bit of information. We did receive comments back from engineering, which we. Are working on addressing, and we'll be meeting with the town engineer on this Thursday um, to discuss them further. So that we can make sure we're fully on the same page um, for them.
Have you met with design review yet, or are you planning to?
We, uh, if I may, we, we went with uh, design review, and uh, they voted unanimously to support our petition.
Right.
We have met with historic commission, and they voted unanimously to support our petition. We have also independently met with the fire department to make certain that uh, fire control access. Meets their criteria. Uh, and they have uh, assured us that we're fine on that score. I have not seen a letter from the fire department yet. Uh, and I've not seen letters uh, from either of the other two boards that I just mentioned.
Great.
Uh, and last year, there was a determination made that there was no need to go before the conservation commission on this site. So we did not even approach them this year with the petition.
I mean, it's a beloved property. I know it's not technically historic, but it's definitely in Winchester's DNA, and I know. I mean, it's a beloved property. I know it's not technically historic, but it's definitely in Winchester's DNA and I know it's. Houses, beloved programs, and I can understand the need for the space. Um I was happy to hear that the color scheme is gonna match the original building. Um can you make a comment on the choice for a flat roof uh when there are so many pitched roofs around it? I'm curious about that. Will it be? A green roof or is there any use for it or just that was what worked for your designer?
Um. I I hate to say that it was a matter of convenience because that sounds lazy of us. And were we to show you the design that we had last year, you would have seen a number of pitched roofs and. And 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 a very gallant articulation. To be sympathetic with the existing house. This year because we are essentially building in the back and we are building at the crest of a hill. When you can look through the trees in the middle of winter, you would not see any slope on any roof. At all, so we said um as a matter of economics, there is no rational reason to spend more for. An articulated roof scape. Um and B, we have another area of of flat roof where mechanical equipment will be going. Also out of sightline um as required.
I wonder if you preserve some of the view from those rear windows at the top floor by leaving it flat as well. Now you can see the owl.
I don't know that we preserve, we preserve access to daylight.
Um. That matters.
Uh and it matters and we've created a light well between the existing building and the new addition. Uh it's not a total light well, sort of like the non-total eclipse of the other day. Uh but we're we're trying to get light into studio spaces wherever possible. One of the comments from the design review committee was that um. We think about the light well space between as an opportunity for an artistic venture. We don't know what that is, they didn't know what it was, but we said, yeah, we we would like to think about that as well. We just had not included that in our petition.
That's great.
They thanked us.
That's great. Uh should we look over the requirements for site plan review? Who has them? Diab Taylor?
Taylor, I hope.
I I don't have them in front of me, but if you continue your conversation, I'll bring them up.
It's it's section nine, something around there. Yeah, I um you've. Um Brian, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question. I went over and take a look, took a look today. Um could you, is it possible um to go to? Um I guess it would be like the last page where you or the second to last page where you have sort of the. Uh the images of you through your owl views, the second to last page, which is the owl view um.
That's gonna come hurt me.
We're gonna call it from now on, we're gonna refer to it as owl views.
Yes, I think I think Taylor's the one controlling that.
Oh, perfect. Uh that one right there. So I was looking, there um. There are several large trees that currently on those location, there's one that sort of comes out from that existing patio, there's one about. Five feet out from the left of the patio and then there's one roughly where the 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 dad and his child are standing in the picture. I presume that I don't see them here, that they are going to be gone as well. Um uh just curious what what the plan is.
Yep, I can, I can speak to this, but um both of those two trees that you just spoke about, I. One is um an evergreen tree of some sort um and and it. Uh that one will definitely need to go and I think the other one is an oak. Um I've been told it's um diseased. It's also where uh like some utilities and stormwater is going, um so that will also um need to be cut. I think it would be also overhanging the proposed addition.
Okay, so it looked like it looked like I I I have a picture that I took, but I can't, don't have any way to get it from my phone to there. It looked like three large trees. There was one rate where the rhododendron, I I think that must be a rhododendron or an azalea in the front. There's one that's sort of almost coming out of the portrait there. Very close to the building, I just, those three trees are, is that one that's also gonna go as well?
I that one, I think it's a cedar, um it I that is currently, we're planning to keep that. Uh we have no plans to remove that.
Okay, so it's just not on the drawing because for artists are, okay, so just those two trees.
Brian, yeah, one of the, one of the interesting things, Brian, is in terms of trying to render this. It's very hard to get a view uh from almost anywhere to try to explain how you can't see it. Uh but we're also trying to explain what it is we're doing.
Okay, so I just want, so those two trees, I just wanted to understand what trees you're imagining are going and what one. Um you're not imagining going, understanding that things happen along the way, but I want to understand that. Thank you.
You bet.
But I just wanna have a quick follow up on Brian's comment about the two trees. I noted you. Your plans call for removal of two trees. Are there are plans to uh replace them elsewhere?
No, at this point there are not. I will say that the board and the director, the chair of the board. Are very conscientious about preserving really what are some very fine landscaping features that exist today. Uh and when and as plantings uh die out and they do over time. Uh they need to be dealt with and the school has endorsed the process of new plantings. We have not proposed new plantings uh in this particular application, however.
I would, I would um. I would um ask that you do so since you are reducing the the total true canopy on the site. So um just to maintain our existing canopy, I think that would be uh a positive addition to this project.
Uh I think that's a very reasonable request.
Right. Taylor, anything we're missing?
Um.
From site planner view.
So the 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 eleven points, the the eleven. The ZBA will vote to grant uh. The site plan approval based off of these eleven. Um facts, would you like me to read them to you all?
Uh.
Let me just see them.
I think we just discussed the departure from character materials and scale. We heard from historic, so there's no adverse effect on that. Um we talked about the trees. Engineering, you're getting back to on storm water management, we read about the vehicular safety and pedestrian in your paper packet and you touched on it here. Um you taught, you have approval from the fire department. Um we just discussed obstruction, there's no change to the front, so public accessibility is not changed from the front. The owl's gonna be surprised about the trees, but other than that. Um seems like we're good there. Visual intrusion, you mentioned that you have a new location for HVAC, right? That's gonna be on a flat roof in the back.
Yes.
Okay, and then uh you mentioned a few times in your past application and this one that you're very aware of. Light intrusion for the neighborhood, so I sort of trust that's been addressed. Any comment you wanna make? Okay. Um contamination of groundwater, you touched, I think engineering deals with most of that.
Yes, and that that's a very significant uh piece of engineering that we are undertaking.
Okay, um. And then we talked about parking, no change to signage, right? The front staying the same, we would love to see the landscaping loss replaced and. That's mostly as part of our environmental standards. Did I miss anything? Reading this over, does the board have any new concerns? So do we, I.
Would.
No.
Diab.
I I just wanted to see if the board's ready to move. I would be happy to make a motion to recommend um. Favorable action from the zoning board of appeals on the site plan review. Um with the request that the petitioner replace the two removed trees. With um similar species in terms of canopy and um longevity.
Uh may I? May I just?
Hold hold on one second, Ralph, we 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 have a, we have a motion, so would so would anyone like to second that?
I would second that.
So technically.
Roll call voter, is this the right time for another comment? We can't make another comment till we vote, right?
No, we we, at this point, we can have further discussion on the motion. So if the board wants to hear from um Mr. Deneen, they can, they can request, they can say, yes, go ahead. Does the board wish to hear from? I think the board says yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh we're delighted uh to add the trees. I just want to be clear. That the two trees that we're talking about are now very mature trees. And it's not clear that we would be able to replace them at the same maturity. I can warrant, however, that we would replace the trees in like kind with mature enough species. So that they don't look stupid, that's number one, that's a value judgment. But two, that they would be able to grow their canopies accordingly. Cause I think it's a good idea, Deb, and I thank you for allowing me to speak.
That's great.
Yeah.
We trust in the longevity of the music school. The trees will get there.
So at this point, Carrie, I think you could call for a roll call vote.
Okay, let's take a roll call vote, Diab.
Yes.
Brian?
I.
John?
I.
Nick?
I.
And I'm an I as well, so pa- passes unanimously.
May I extend?
Very much.
Thanks to the thoughtful deliberation and on behalf of the entire Winchester Community School community. I wish to thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your time and your presentation and good luck with the project and the next steps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have um MBTA three. Um have a bunch of topics to. To cover, um I think we can kind of just take a line item by. I guess there's no list, but we can kind of just go go over um. Everything, Carrie, would you mind stepping up and? Starting with Nick, we.
We oh.
So so the main.
Yeah, I uh okay. I I was just gonna say that 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 Nick, Nick did. Express interest to start the conversation first, but let's have, let's have. Carrie, if you can kind of just direct what we're gonna be talking about in three A and then and then allow Nick to do his thing, that'd be great.
Sure, absolutely. So we have submitted the warrant article and we are gearing up to town meeting, which starts, I think, on April twenty eighth. And so the main body of our conversation needs to be about outreach, outreach to the public, outreach to town meeting members, making sure that everyone. Knows what's coming and and um that we've answered all questions and addressed all concerns. Um we were hoping to not need to do an amendment at town meeting, but as we heard feedback from the public. Um we took a, we took a twen- two hundred and fifty thousandth look at what we have submitted and what we've been working on. And we wanted to make sure that we are. Able to do what we've promised, which is to continue the process once the uh once the town is in compliance with the state regulations. Remember, the state um requires us to be in compliance with the three A communities act by the end of this year. Um and requires a ninety day review process, so fall town meeting would be late to be making this move where we get our our. Um initial zoning changes um submitted and in process and passed by town meeting. So when we prepared this warrant, we wanted to keep the door cracked so that we could continue to adjust our regulations. Um over time to make sure that we are making recommendations for building construction in the mod. Um the multifamily, the MBTA overlay district, um that is continuous with the underlying zoning, so from the CBD. And the GBD two and all the way up North Main to the border with Woburn. We wanna make sure that that, that that is done thoughtfully and that it's done in. Concert with the surrounding zoning. We're not able to lean on the underlying zoning in the CBD. Because the state has let us know that the underlying zoning for the parcels that are on what's now the CBD district. Um is too cumbersome to development, so we're not able to sort of. Do what, um if you sort of read through what we've submitted, it sounds like we're counting on the underlying zoning to carry design regulations. For coming development. And because we know that that will be rejected, um we wanna make sure we keep the door open to weigh in on. Development standards and design guidelines for proposed projects. So when we read back over. Um the doors that we did hold open for um creating regulations moving forward, we addressed a lot of important topics. Uh the open space requirements, the setbacks, the um relationship to other buildings, relationship to the sidewalks. And unfortunately, what we did not, I think, do a sufficient job of was. Um leave room for us to write those standards around building design and so. We looked at it a few times, uh we do limit ourselves in the writing of that passage and I don't. Actually have it in front of me, so I don't, I'll get the number wrong if I say it. Um we we. We sort of are limited in which regulations we can weigh in. Um by the word only and the phrase, um we can, we can create regulations around only these topics and that's the ones that I just mentioned. Um but we we probably want, we can't strike the word only because that would. That would open us up to making regulations around absolutely everything and while that's really favorable as the applicants, the state's not gonna allow that. Um and so we have to narrow down our efforts. We don't have time and it would be um irresponsible to try to push through. Specific design guidelines right now because we again wanna be very thoughtful about this. We gave ourselves a summer to make sure that we present everything. In concert with North Main Street, but I think it would be prudent and it would be responsive to the feedback that we're getting. To add a bullet to that list of topics that we can add regulations to that just says architectural design. And then I think we can work on our outreach, get through town meeting and then we can spend some thoughtful time making sure that we've written those. Design guidelines um in a way that that considers all the feedback and and leaves us with a really um. Really beautiful outcome as we go. Um so Nick, I don't wanna take the floor from you for too long, so.
Right, no, I just wanted to, if if uh and and you may have touched on this, but um. Uh when we, when we talked last time, we we found a sentence, we took it, we took out the sentence, the design guidelines are non-binding. And I was wondering if if Taylor could bring up the that page again. Um and I I what I wanted to suggest is on that page, it says, under site plan review authority. Um. It talks about such design guidelines must be objective and not subjective and may only address.
Exactly, that's the only.
I I I think that's too specific, it 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 really narrows our ability to add add to this.
That's exactly what we're talking about, so we can't remove only, we can't say um we may create. So the the site plan review authority will be the planning board, so by majority vote of the planning board, we could net, we could then, once we're passed in compliance. With the state, we could then add guidelines that are objective and not subjective. That may only address, so in that A through F.
Why can't we just say that may address?
Because I think the state will turn it around, because if it says may address, then we and it then we could continue to add to the list. You know, how cute are the puppies in the building? You know, we could really sort of spiral. And so I think what we need to do is add a G that says architectural design.
Okay, um I I I I feel more comfortable if we took the only out and just see what they say.
I I hear that and I leaned hard in that direction and so we heard enough feedback from. Um well, actually, one of the things that we did was we turned to two communities, uh Lexington and Arlington, which have already. Submitted their guidelines, had them approved by the state and are currently in compliance. And this is essentially exactly what they submitted, um except that they have a line that says architectural design.
Okay, um. Well, maybe we should add that.
Pretty wide open. I mean, that gives us a lot of room to um weigh in on. Windows, you know, roof lines, lots of pieces of architecture, you know, how does the, you know, doorways, all of the things that I think have. Sort of percolated up to us as concerns about what will this street look like? We don't want. You know, we wanna keep our town beautiful and I think architectural design is what's missing.
So so that's, that would be it, G and then architectural design?
Yeah, I mean, we can reorder them if we want to, but we just need it on the list.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I guess we need something, I I would say, I mean, I don't like the word only, I I think it's it's too restrictive, but I I guess I could live with our. You know, if we added architectural design. You know, if we added architectural design, I I guess I could move that, that we add that.
Brian, your hand's up.
Yeah, I've been thinking about this a lot, too. And I think I'm I'm sort of thinking the way Nick is thinking that. I I I I think I would prefer, although I I'm convincible, to simply remove the word only. And. See where the chips fall. As opposed to the alternative, which is. I I feel like it already says that's because the design guidelines must be objective and not subjective. And may address, and list those all.
So what I worry about is that if we remove only. And then we come back with. I I I worry that we're gonna fall out of compliance arguing with the state. And so I think if we. Would would you be hoping to add anything besides guidelines relevant to arch- architectural design? I guess is the question.
I I I guess for me to answer, I would say, I don't know.
Right, I think that's the answer is that we don't know. I mean, we've got a lot of work to do.
I think that's what the state would worry about. I think that's why they would reject it.
But.
I think if they know we can only write regulations around these, it will be. And there it covers everything we're concerned about. I mean, architectural design is. We're already doing lots to control the plot and the relationship to the natural environment and relationship to other buildings and the street. And I think if we leave it too open. You know, everyone gets one vote, but that's my my thought is that only is sort of. It's a tricky word, but I think we will do better following precedent, which at this point is two two towns that did essentially the same thing with architectural design on the list. Deeb, you have your hand up, too.
I just wanted to, I I assure you that the word only. I think the state is is quite concerned. That. We would, that without, without some sort of a list of things to consider. That communities would choose, we could come up with. Very objective and specific design guidelines, which would make it impossible to develop. So the word, the reason the the state would prefer a list of things that we would include. Is so that we don't later on add other things like, you know. Perhaps not cute puppies in the windows, but we could come up with. You know, you could only have mansard roofs. Or you could, you know, so the 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 state is really. Insistent that these. Not be a an obstacle to development and. Towns have become very creative. In crafting guidelines which make it very difficult. So I think. The the concern I have with taking out the word only is that. If the state comes through and even though we have severability clauses. In this. Bylaw. They're not going to add a word back in, I don't believe. They're not going to say, okay, we're gonna put only back in. They may just strike this whole list. That's an, that's unknown. I believe that that's what they might do. You know, I'm not a lawyer, but. My understanding is they're not going to rewrite the zoning. They'll simply say. This section is non-compliant and we will strike that, in which case we won't have any. Design guidelines. We don't have any bullets to 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 work with. So. I think that the putting in the G. Is a compromise which moves us. Beyond this vote. And then it gives us more time to. Understand more about what the state is willing. To allow. And again, we can come back to town meeting in the fall. And say, we have now more information and we can make things more specific. At that point. We are not in danger of being non-compliant. We can always come back and tweak these. I know there's a limit to the appetite for town meeting to come and retweak things. But with something this complex and with. The amount of uncertainty. I I. I wish we could actually put in more than simply. Architectural design, I think the. But I don't know that we have the time between now and. Town meeting to come up with. More detailed things. But it allows us, I think, a breathing room so that, you know. I think what everyone's worried about is what projects will come forward. Why will in the process of writing the guidelines and, you know, what's going to happen in the next six months before we get to the next town meeting? Can we put the wording in here which would give us enough control? Until we can get more certainty and put in. More specific things which would be compliant. So, I mean, that's the fine line I'm thinking of. And I I I like the wording that Carrie has suggested and the fact that the state has. Approved to other communities. Wording, I think, gives us a leg to stand on.
Brian?
I was just gonna um. Just respond that I believe, and I'm trying to find it right now, that Arlington. That's been approved, says including but not limited to, and then it has a list of items, which is. Essentially the same as removing only. It if it's if it's a people are more amenable to changing only. May only address. To including but not limited to. Which would be. Terminology already approved. I I I believe, I'm trying to find it right now. Then we know we at least are using something that the state has already said is okay.
Yeah, I I I agree with that and I think that we're, I think that otherwise we're restricting ourselves too much. We don't have. We don't, we need to have some kind of a foundation in the law to build.
I still think we name architectural design because I still think.
Why don't we, why don't we name architectural design anyway? I could, I could move that we add a G. To name architectural design.
So.
I would, I would second that if that is actually a motion for needing seconding, I would do that.
Okay, with a motion on the floor and seconded. What's that? Yep, so with a with a. Motion on the floor and seconded, we will do a roll call vote to add to. Eight eleven seven two site plan review authority. The addition of letter G architectural design. Deeb?
I I vote aye.
Brian?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And Nick?
Aye.
I'm an I as well, so it passes unanimously. And then.
I li- I like the idea of the Arlington language because it is more expansive and and we know that it. It would be acceptable to the. Authority.
If we could, if we could verify that that is the case, I'm all for it. I'm just, I just want to make sure that. That language is actually what was approved.
Okay, Brian, I don't know if your hand is up newly or formerly.
Formerly. I'm looking to try to find it now. I'm sorry.
Great. We are, we are.
Can I just give a, give a warning to, I'm I'm happy to entertain that change. I would suggest. Board giving me a little bit of time to do a little bit of research into that before making a decision. That's my suggestion, but feel free to make the the decision tonight if you'd like.
Okay, let let's, we have. One more meeting before town meeting. So let's leave this as is and find the best wording in time. For the next meeting, this will be a, this will be an amendment presented on the floor anyway, right?
That's correct. The only way that we can make changes at this point is is an amendment on on floor.
Okay, and we have one minute left before we're meant to transition to an executive session. So any, any. We did not get through much of our list. Anything to say about outreach sessions? We will, we will return to this once we've done some research into the wording that has been passed for Lexington and Arlington and we'll discuss it at our next meeting. Anything about outreach?
I think we have. We have a public session that we are, an outreach session for town meeting members. That we are going to be doing in two weeks. It's going to be same night as our as our planning board meeting. It will start at. Seven PM. And we'll go until. Did we say it was going to be an hour, an hour and a half? I forget what it was.
I think you're right. I think it's seven to eight thirty.
Eight thirty and then we would. Our planning board meeting would pick up right after that public session. Is. Over. The idea would be that. We're gonna. Send out blasts to town meeting members. We've asked. All right, I don't know what, my brain is futts right now, so I'm not.
Okay, let's try to get attendance to be high.
The date of the regularly scheduled planning board meeting?
It will be the first hour of that. The first hour will be an open meeting about three A and then we'll close the open meeting and convene the the planning board meeting.
And is that, what's the date again of that?
April twenty third.
The twenty third.
I I know there's, you know, lots more to discuss about this, but we are up against time and we have a another meeting that we need to get to, so. Unless there's anything else pressing, I'll take a.
I guess I just wanted, I wanted people to just give some thought to the possibility of having an addendum that actually included some guidelines similar to the ones that I'd circulated. But I I'm I'm not looking to have a. I know we've been through a lot. I'm not looking to have a discussion on it now. But.
I I think that will be too detailed to feel good about by town meeting. I I love them and I think that we'll discuss them at length over the summer and we'll bring them back in the fall. But I think rushing guidelines is going to be a mistake.
Just, just a small point of order. The guidelines don't have to go before town meeting. Those are written and approved by the board after our own public hearing.
A simple majority.
To put in development standards. Those would be an amendment to the bylaw which would have to go to town meeting. But the design guidelines themselves are, that's our document. We don't, we don't have to go to town meeting for that. Oh, I suppose since I'm I'm officially. Managing the meeting. So at this point, if there's nothing further than we should. Go into executive session. So the idea for this executive session is to conduct a performance review of the town planner.
And to be, just to be really clear about it, because it's an executive session, we are performing a review of the town planner with invited recent past. Planning board members and with the intention of preparing for contract negotiations with Taylor.
Okay, yep. Didn't know we were doing a negotiation.
Well, he would, I mean, it's to address salary and.
Yes, yes. Thank you for the language. So we will not be returning to an open meeting after that, so. We will, you will, we are going to say goodnight to our public at this point. So we will need to have, I would need a motion to move into executive session for the reasons that we just stated.
Do we close the meeting and then open a new one or do we not close this one?
No, we don't close this one. We're just moving into. The private session. So we have a, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so roll call vote, please, John?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
I say aye as well. So thank you to all of those who joined us this evening. Appreciate it, both those who joined via Zoom is also out in. TV land. Thanks to Wind Cam as always, much appreciated, never taken for granted. And we will see all of you folks. In a couple of weeks. So. Taylor, if you would allow our our our. People who. Are going to join us in executive session to stay. And then if you could also make Carrie the host. So that you can take the rest of the evening off.
And just to make sure, Nancy, we would kindly ask you to stick around, please.
Yes, please, Nancy. We do have minutes. Of executive sessions. So that. In case there is a question, open meeting log question. Those are available.
Carrie, I just gave you a host, but you're you're gonna have to remove people who aren't supposed to be here.
Okay, so we should just have the planning board members, Win Cam, Nancy Polkari.
Not Win Cam.
Not Win Cam, sorry, Win Cam.
Sorry, Win Cam, sorry, Ellen.
Also, thank you, Win Cam, and good night. Thank you, Ellen, and good night. Hey, How are you? And we're missing Sally. I still see.
Yeah, you're gonna have to.
Once, once it, once we figure it out.
There we go. Okay, we are just missing Sally.
Oh, we still have Win Cam.
Still have Win Cam.
Still have Win Cam by Win Cam.
You just need to boot them.
Yep.